Good evening, everyone. We're contending with wind and sun and lots of other things tonight. My name is Norine Smith, and I'm the Town Moderator for the town of Charlton. I hereby call our town meeting to order and share with you the return of the warrant, and I'd like to use my gavel for the first time. To the item of the constables of the town of Charlton and the county of Northville, greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Charlton, qualified to vote in elections, to meet in the Heritage School Oxford Road in said Charlton on Saturday, June 13th at 8:00 in the forenoon when the polls will be open for the annual election of officers. After action is taken on Article 1 of this warrant, to meet again on Monday, June 15th, 2020, at 6:00 in the evening at Charlton Middle School, Oxford Road in said Charlton for the purpose of taking action on the remaining articles listed on the warrant. That the polls for the annual election of officers on Saturday, June 13th, will be closed at 8:00 in the evening, and that the remainder of this meeting on Monday, June 15th, will be adjourned at 11:00 in the evening unless voted otherwise by the registered voters present, and that the articles in this warrant shall be deemed part of the annual town meeting of the town of Charlton for the fiscal year 2021. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof, one at each of the post offices, one in Dexter Memorial Hall, and one in the Charlton Municipal Offices, George C. McKinstry III Building in said town, seven days at least before the time and place of holding meeting. Hereof fail not and make due returns of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding meeting. Given under our hands this 28th day of May in the year of our Lord 2020, signed by the Board of Selectmen, David Singer, Chairperson, Karen A. Speewack, Vice Chairperson, William Borowski, Clerk, Deborah B. Noble, Member, John P. McGrath, Member, a true copy attested by Karen McCroy, the Town Clerk, posted as directed by hand by Constable of Charlton, Massachusetts, Jordan Willow Evans, on June 1st, 2020. So before we take actions on the articles in the warrant, please rise, remove your hats, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Our next order of business is to review our procedures and protocols, which have changed a little bit in light of COVID. We have our visitors, non-voting members, who are seated to my right, your left. Those who are registered voters with the town should all have received a voting device for electronic voting. If you have not received one yet, please check in at the desk at the front and make sure you have one with you. When you choose to leave the meeting, so you are obviously under no obligation to stay for the entire meeting, if you leave, you must return your voting device to the table where you picked it up before you leave the meeting. If you do not do so, it will cause the meeting to be disrupted and we will have to stop and negotiate what happened to that device, because we can't allow that to go into the hand of someone else who's a non-voter or otherwise be used during the meeting. So if you are going to leave early, my apologies, but please go up to the front desk and return the voting device. I'd like to introduce the folks on the stage, ask them to introduce themselves. We have a few new members on our Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to welcome the new members on both the Board of Selectmen and the other boards and committees in town who were elected on the weekend, and thank those outgoing members who have served the town faithfully for many years. So may we start to my right with the Board of Selectmen members to introduce yourselves? We don't have nameplates here, so you're identifying your name. Thank you. Karen Speewack.
Steve Corones.
Pat Seebelk. And here David Singer. We're welcoming our new town administrator.
Andrew Wallace.
Andrew Wallace, our town council.
Good evening.
Jim Cosgrove, Attorney Cosgrove. And our finance committee members, if we could introduce yourselves.
Henry Kamasi.
Josh Speewack.
Jason Julian.
Charlie Vasquez.
Cal Porter. Thank you. Our finance director. Oh, we don't have a microphone. Donna Folio. Thank you, Donna. And town clerk, assistant. Karen McCroy. And Mary. Okay. In case of emergency, we don't have the same constraints as being inside a building, but should there be an emergency, please proceed slowly to your vehicles. In terms of procedure, all discussion must go through the moderator. If you wish to participate in the discussion, you must limit your comments to the matter of business in the article at hand. You must avoid comments related to personalities. You must follow the voting protocol. Non-voters may not vote. When you approach the mic, please offer your name and your address in town and be recognized by the moderator before speaking. And please avoid any side conversations. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 17, if you fail to cooperate with our established protocols, you will be warned, and then you will be removed if necessary. We have a new voting procedure this evening using your electronic devices, so we're going to run a test question to make sure that they're working properly. When the vote is called, your device will be activated. You will not be able to vote prior to the vote being called. When the vote is called, all those in favor of the motion will press the green button, 1A, to indicate yes. All those against the motion will press the red button, 2B, to indicate no. On your device, it will show either the A or the B that you have pressed, and then it will turn over to an "okay," which signals that your vote has been received. You are able to vote more than once during the 30 seconds that your device is activated for each vote. So should you choose to change your vote, the last vote that you press will be the vote that is counted. Okay, so let's try this together. First question, will this be our first and last outdoor town meeting? All those voting yes, press A. Those voting no, press B. There are 10 seconds remaining. So the eyes have it, 54 to 37. For a total of 91 voters. Does that match the device number that's been distributed?
We don't know.
We don't know. Right. Some people may choose not to vote. For those of you joining us in the rear, you need to come forward to receive an electronic voting device so that you can participate in voting. If you're a non-town resident, please be seated in the visitor section. Thank you. Okay. Since Article 1 was taken care of at the town elections on June 13th, we will begin the meeting with Article 2. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of its officers for the past year or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move that the town accept the reports of its officers for the past year in the annual town report.
Is there a second? Mr. Corones. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee? Not on this. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen approves or recommends this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes. Those opposed, please signify by voting no. Five seconds remaining. 91 in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes unanimously. That's good practice. All right. Moving on, Article 3, litigation. To see what action the town will take in relation to prosecuting and defending actions or suits for and against the town, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Madam Moderator. Ms. Speewack.
I move that town council be authorized to prosecute and defend actions for and against the town.
Do we have a second? A second from the audience, from the voters. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen approves that motion.
Supports the motion. Okay. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes. Those opposed, by voting no. 10 seconds remaining. 90 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative, the motion carries. Article 4, appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, transfer, or borrow, and appropriate a sum or sums to accounts to be specified at the town meeting for payment of one or more prior fiscal year's bills not paid due to an insufficiency of appropriation or for any other reason, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
Just a quick point of exchange. I've been instructed that Karen and I, we just swap back and forth due to the distance of the mic.
No problem. Thank you.
The, I move that the following prior year bills not previously paid due to late billing be paid from the following fiscal year 2020 accounts as printed below in the handout.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second from Ms. Speewack. It states, may I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee approves this motion.
And is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The BLS also supports this motion.
Thank you. It states in your warrant that a forfeit's vote is needed, but I'm advised by town council that that is only in the event that the item has been unpaid due to insufficient appropriations. May I have the opinion of the finance director of the town, if that's required? Okay, we've confirmed it was an insufficient appropriation. Right, is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes. Those opposed, please signify by voting no. 10 seconds remaining. We're 85 votes in the affirmative, 11 in the negative. Pulling out the calculator. 77 votes would have been needed, so the motion carries. Article 5. Inter-intra-departmental transfers for fiscal year 20. To see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate sums to be specified at the annual town meeting within departmental accounts from one line item of such accounts to another line item or line items of such accounts for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Speewack.
I move that the following sum be transferred and appropriated to the following account for any purpose for which funds may be expended from the latter accounts, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing vote, each item being considered a separate appropriation. Again, it's as printed below.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a recommendation, please, from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves this article.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this article.
Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes. All those opposed, please signify by voting no. 90 votes in the affirmative, 5 in the negative. The motion carries. Article 6, town budget. To see if the town will vote to raise, borrow, or transfer and appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and as provided by General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as set forth in the budget voted under this article, or as separately voted by the town under other articles of the warrant for this meeting, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move, A, that the amounts of money set forth in the column headed FY 2021 in column recommendation, and rows headed for the departmental pools for personnel and expenses, from the report prepared and voted by the Finance Committee for recommendation of the annual town meeting on June 15th, 2020, entitled "Town Charlton FY 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant FY 2021, Town Budget Recommendation of the Finance Committee, June 15th, 2020, Article 6, as most recently revised, except for those items which have been set aside for discussion, and those covered by other articles be appropriated for the several purposes stated in itemized. 1.19 million to be transferred from ambulance, RRFA. 5,000 to be transferred from sales cemetery lot, RRFA. 25,000, 625, to be transferred from twinkle pond dam, RRFA. 23,000 to be transferred from wetland protection, RRFA. 27,000 to be transferred from cable, RRFA. 4841 from fund balance reserve for board premiums. And 29,297,599 to be raised by taxation. Each item marked as an actus being considered a separate appropriation. And B, to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as set forth in the budget voted under this article or as separately voted by the town under other articles of the warrant for this meeting, and to fund any settled union contracts.
Thank you. I believe you intended to say bond premiums, not board premiums. Just a correction.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, thank you, from a voter. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee approves this motion.
A recommendation, please, from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports the article.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Before we take a discussion on this, for those voters that may have arrived in the back, would you please come forward and register at the front table and receive a voting device so that your vote may be counted? If you're a non-voter visitor to the meeting, you may be seated to my right, your left. Okay, is there anything to be said on this matter, speaking to the budget? If you were to speak, if you could say your full name and your address in town?
My name is Stephen Sage. Is that picking me up from here?
If you're going to touch the microphone, might I advise that you use the wipes that are available here? Thank you.
My name is Stephen Sage, 41, William, Charlotte, Massachusetts. I have about three questions on the budget moving forward. Under receipts, on the first page, it talks about local receipts including mass meal tax. It doesn't tell how much the meal tax is. Can you tell us how the meal tax worked this year and compare it to the previous year to see if the virus has affected the amounts received?
Thank you. So the question is speaking to under funds available and specifically local receipts including meals tax. I'd like to ask for the opinion of the finance director, the input from the finance director to respond to that question, please.
The meals taxes paid out quarterly, so we won't know the impact really of the COVID-19 on the fourth quarter until June 30th. But I can give you through March 30th, the quarter ending this past March 30th, we had collected 173,610.35. Comparing that to March 31st of last year, we had collected at that point We had used 180,000 in the budget for FY 20, so we were short 6,389.65. That I anticipate that we will have, be able to collect in the fourth quarter. It will be impacting what we would have normally collected, but not enough to impact what we budgeted for.
Is everyone able to hear that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Folli.
Keep in mind, folks, when this first came up, we were expecting to bring in maybe a little under $40,000 a year. My next question is, I noticed that the, there's been a reduction on our town council lines by about 10,000. Is that due to the fact that in the past we have not used all the funding? Or whether we expect that there'll be a lot less litigation this coming year?
So at the bottom of the second page, where it states town council, it's been split into two accounts, general town council and special town council, the total of which was $100,000 in FY 2020 and is recommended at 90,000. So the question is, why the reduction? And may I defer that question again to Ms. Folli? Andrew? Thank you. Andrew Golos, town administrator.
The reduction in the line was due to anticipating less use of town council and being more frugal with our use.
Great news.
Thank you.
And under the, at least, it's line 207, I think. It's hard to sell being so old, small print. Bulletproof vests was requested for, looks like about 9,600 something dollars, and it's been offered at zero. Is there a reason that line request has been zeroed out?
So that will be line 207, bulletproof vests. And Ms. Folli, do you have a response to offer? Thank you.
So we're hoping to get part of that paid for by a grant, and I think there should be enough funds available in this fiscal year to cover whatever the difference is for what we don't get from a grant.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on the Devon Charlton school budget, it's a very small increase from the previous year, possibly barely enough to cover salary. I'd like to know whether the school committee and superintendent are planning to reduce staffing, or are there programs that have been reduced to bring the budget in as to where it stands?
Thank you for the question. Is the superintendent present? Yes. Mr. Lamarche, are you able to speak at this point to any planned reductions in staffing for the Devon Charlton Regional School District?
Good evening. My name is Steven Lamarche, Superintendent for the Devon Charlton Regional School District. At this point in time, we don't have reductions in our staff. We were able to offset some of the costs moving forward for some of the captured savings and transportation since we've been shut down as a school district, and try to use that as an offset going to the next fiscal year. We don't have reductions or program reductions at this time.
Thank you. That's it, thanks.
Thank you for your questions.
That's good. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Peter Cooper Jr., 194 Berry Corner Road. I just had a question about line number 308. It's sort of near the end of the top of one of the pages, near the end. Street lighting, I just noticed that was being zeroed out and was curious, does that mean all the lights are getting turned off? Or is that just going to some other budget line item? Or why is that now zero?
Mr. Cooper, thank you for the question. Ms. Folli?
Yes, what has happened is we offset with a program with solar, and we've been turning all the electricity costs through that line item that's in the municipal building's account. So we really don't need that line anymore. It's too hard to separate it out with the solar credits that we get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Adrian Smith, 31, Robert Boulevard, Charlton, Massachusetts.
Hello, Adrian Smith, 31, Robert Boulevard, Charlton, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Smith.
I have a question. Could you, could you address line 419? The public safety complex, thirty-two thousand dollars?
Line 419, under short-term interest, speaks the public safety complex. And the dollar amount recommended is thirty-two thousand. Ms. Boglum?
Yes. So in January, I think it was, the finance committee approved spending one point four of the twenty-eight point five that was appropriated last May. It was in the levy limit to pay for further architectural designs. And we did go out to borrow, and that's the payment of the interest on that short-term issue. So that's an interest payment, thousand dollars on one point four million.
For a public safety complex?
Correct.
The town voters voted not to have?
That, so what was, what was just stated is that the town did vote to approve that project, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee approved spending up to one point four million for the initial planning phases, is my understanding.
Correct. So we're still continuing to develop a plan for the public safety complex?
That is correct. It was approved by the voters, and the financing is the question.
Okay. My other question is, I looked at all the increases in salary, and it appeared to me to be inequitable. Just from a random sampling of looking at the salaries. For example, many superintendents, the cemetery superintendent got a nine percent increase. The council and agent director got an eight point three percent increase. The finance director, town accountant, got a seventeen percent increase. The assessor got a six point nine percent increase, and the treasurer a twenty percent increase on this current budget. However, if you're the town clerk, you got a two percent increase. If you're an administrative assistant, maybe you got, let's say, two percent.
Could you please clarify your question?
I think the budget is inequitable, and I wonder, could the Finance Committee address these inequities? If we're expected to fix salaries, how can we make a more equitable increase in salaries?
So I will ask the Finance Director to speak to the equity of the salary distribution in the current budget proposal.
So the town went through, with the HR Director and the new town administrator and myself, we went through the pay plan and assigned to the correct pays according to education and experience, based upon the Pay Equity Act that was passed July 1st, 2018, to bring all the salaries into where they should be.
So the town clerk gets a two percent pay rise. I, I feel like that's inequitable. Like I feel like, the more salary you got, the more you're paying, you're increasing pay, which I don't think is a fair budget.
Thank you. I think you've made your point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Anything to be said? Again, returning to Article Six. All those in favor of the town budget as presented in the motion and in the warrant, please signify by selecting yes. All those opposed, please select no. Okay, the vote is seventy-eight in the affirmative, twenty in the negative. A majority vote was needed, so the motion passes. Thank you. Article Seven, the Water Department Budget Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow or transfer from available funds, and appropriate to the Water Enterprise Fund such sums of money as may be necessary, together with revenue from Water Department operations, to defray the expenses of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Ms. Biwak?
I move that the sums listed in the last column below, under the heading Water Enterprise Revenues, be raised by taxation, transferred and appropriated to the FY 2020 Water Department Enterprise Fund Account, to be expended under the direction of the Water and Sewer Commissioners for the respective expense purposes set forth in the last column below, under the heading Water Enterprise Expenses. Each item being marked with an asterisk, being considered a separate appropriation, again as printed below.
Thank you. And a second from Mr. Singer. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on this motion? Finance Committee supports the motion. A recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Board of Selectmen supports the motion. Is there anything to be said on this matter? I'd like to clarify that in the warrant, it states a two-thirds vote needed. In fact, it's a majority. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving?
Is that from stabilization? It's from, and it's two-thirds. See, another article you think. Yeah. See, that's Reverend Warner, from stabilization.
Thank you. Clarification, this does require a two-thirds vote. All right, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by voting yes. Those opposed, please signify by voting no. Okay, a two-thirds vote is needed. There were eighty-six votes in the affirmative, fourteen in the negative. The motion carries. Article Eight, Sewer Department Budget Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow or transfer from available funds, and appropriate to the Sewer Enterprise Fund such sums of money as may be necessary, together with revenue from Sewer Department operations, to defray the expenses of the Sewer Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move that the sums listed in the last column below, under the heading Sewer Enterprise Revenues, be raised by taxation, transferred and appropriated to the fiscal year 2021 Sewer Department Enterprise Fund Account, to be expended under the direction of the Water and Sewer Commissioners for the respective expense purposes set forth in the last column below, under the heading Sewer Enterprise Expenses. Each item being marked with an asterisk, each being considered a separate appropriation in the schedule in the handout below.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves this motion?
Thank you. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion?
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing. All those in favor, please select yes. All those against, please select no. A majority is required. Eighty-three votes in the affirmative, fourteen in the negative. The motion carries. Article Nine, capital items and related contracts. Madam Moderator? Yes. Do you have to read the rest? I'm sorry. Sorry, Madam Moderator? Yes. I'd like to make a motion. I move to pass over until the full town meeting. We have a motion and a second from Selectman Cronus. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this article.
Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The support of Selectmen supports this motion.
And does the Finance Committee support the motion?
Does the motion, yes.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed to pass over capital items and related contracts, Article Nine. Is there anything to be said on this matter? All those in favor, please vote, hearing nothing. All those in favor, please vote in the affirmative. Yes, all those opposed, please vote no. Ninety-one votes in the affirmative, seven in the negative. Article Nine, the motion to pass over Article Nine carries. Madam Moderator, point of order.
The speaker on my left, though the speaker on your right is not working. It had oscillated, but for the most part, it's not working. This speaker here is working fine, but when that one did work, that one didn't.
Were you unable to hear the business?
I'm fine. I'm right here in the front row almost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just.
Thank you for the point of order, Mr. Lemansky. The speaker on this side is not working. He said it's broke going back and forth between the two. Is it verified also? Are you sure about? We have our Cracker Jack team on it, so we'll hopefully fix that. So Article Ten, transfer of funds to and from stabilization fund account. Before we address this motion, I'd just like to speak to any voters leaving the meeting early to please come to the table at the front to return your voting devices. Any of you who are joining the meeting late, please come to the front to register and obtain a voting device so that your vote will be counted. If you're a non-voting visitor, we have seating to my right for visitors up on the rise. Thank you. Article Ten, transfer of funds to and from stabilization fund account. To see if the town will vote to add funds to and/or transfer and appropriate sums from the stabilization fund account to an account or accounts to be determined at the town meeting, including but not limited to, for purposes of acquiring land in the town, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move that the following sum be transferred and appropriated to, as indicated below, the following account for the purpose for which funds may be expended from the recipient accounts, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases and or purchase and sale agreements, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing vote, each item being considered a separate appropriation, and simply the stabilization fund monies as listed in the handout.
Second. We have a motion and a second from Ms. Biwak. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves this motion?
Thank you. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. This article only requires a majority to pass because it is allocating funds to the stabilization fund, not from the stabilization fund. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing. All those in favor, please signify by voting yes. All those against, please signify by voting no. There are ninety-two votes in the affirmative, nine in the negative. The motion carries. Article Eleven, Cemetery Perpetual Care. To see if the town will vote to accept the sum of twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars as trust funds from individual persons, the income from each such sum to be used for the perpetual care of the Charlton Cemeteries, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Madam Moderator? Ms. Biwak?
I move that Article Eleven be accepted as printed.
We have a sec, a motion and a second. Thank you. Is that Mr. Borowski? Thank you. Is there a recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves the motion.
Thank you. And may I please have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen? Board of Selectmen supports this motion? Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing. All in favor, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please signify by voting no. The motion passes unanimously, ninety-seven to zero. Article Twelve, revolving funds. To see if the town, upon recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, will vote as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to reestablish and/or establish the following revolving funds, and to authorize the official commission, board, or committee specified in the first column below to expend funds from the specified account without further appropriation, provided that the amount shall, to be expended from such account in the fiscal year commencing this coming July 1st, shall not exceed the amount set forth in the fifth column, that's a correction, unless an additional amount or amounts are recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. or amounts are recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, as presented in your warrant. Or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Singer?
I move that Article twelve be accepted as printed.
Second. With the one change indicating the fifth column. With the correction. Mr. Singer, would you like to include in your motion inclusive of the correction?
I move that Article twelve be accepted as printed with the correction.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Ms. Speewack, second. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen supports the motion.
Thank you. Majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing? All those in favor, please signify by voting yes. All those opposed, please signify by voting no. Ninety-seven votes in the affirmative, five in the negative. The motion carries. Article thirteen, Citizens Petition. To see if the town will vote to eliminate any town project previously approved by vote of town meeting that was later considered by a two-and-a-half override and failed.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Lemansky, would you please state your full name and your address?
Sure. Robert Lemansky, 157 Sunset Drive. Let me reread this. To see if the town will vote to eliminate or discontinue any town project, with the exception of any contracts committed to prior to this vote, previously approved by vote of town meeting, that was later considered by a two-and-a-half override. Madam Moderator, please bear with me here. I need to give a little history here. On May twentieth of two thousand nineteen.
May we have some discussion following if we have a second?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the item, Article thirteen, as stated in the warrant, was restated in a slightly different manner as a motion. So we have a motion. So the motion, again made by Mr. Lemansky, is to see if the town will vote to eliminate or discontinue any town project, with the exception of any contracts committed to prior of this vote, previously approved by town meeting that was later considered by a two-and-a-half override and failed. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee relative to this article?
The Finance Committee does not support this motion.
Okay. Is there a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen on this motion?
The Board of Selectmen does not support the motion.
Okay. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Mr. Lemansky?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And again, I apologize for the, what may appear to be confusing language, but with the history, it'll be explained. On May twentieth, town meeting two thousand nine, there was an article to build a new facility, a safety facility, for $28.5 million. And the vote was two-hundred-and-nine yes to forty-one no. August thirteenth, that vote then went to a town-wide ballot vote. So on the thirteenth of August, there were thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-one people came to the voting polls to vote on one subject, one item, which was to spend the $28.5 million on this project. The vote was eight-hundred-and-sixty to four-hundred-and-ninety-one, which is basically, which is sixty-four percent of the people, voters, were against this. Then on, then on, I believe it was January fifteenth, there was a meeting of the Joint Boards of Selectmen and Finance, who then decided that they were going to go forward with the spending of funds, which, following the rules, you're definitely allowed to go forward with spending funds that were approved at town meeting, because town meeting vote did not specify that a two-and-a-half override was required. But that vote happened in August to where it was overwhelmingly defeated not to spend the money. So at that meeting, the joint meeting, January fifth, both the Board of Selectmen, made up of three members at the time, and the Finance Committee, made up of, I think there was five or six people there, they both unanimously, oh, not unanimously, they, the majority voted to spend $1.4 million after, and I will... Eight-hundred-and-sixty voters said no. So it's this conduct, and if I call it conduct, that as a taxpayer and a voter, at least it upsets me that the message wasn't crystal clear that the voters were not happy with the way that it was presented. Not that they were, I, myself, I'm not against a new fire station. I'm not against improvements. Am I against spending twenty-eight, twenty-eight-point-five or twenty-eight-point-two million dollars? The answer is yeah, yes.
Thank you. So I think you've made your point. That is what your Article thirteen, Citizens Petition, aims to address.
And that's, that's put very well, thank you. Aimed to address the fact that what this will do is we have to, according to statute, the Selectmen had, and with the Finance Committee, but the Selectmen had the right to go forward and make a contract with the architectural company to spend this money, and that's why the change was made, to make sure that we identified that, that that could, that we're not trying to negate a contract, because we legally can't do that.
Thank you.
As so pointed out, our town council in its notes, very, very well. So that's my point.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter? And I would ask speakers to please restrict yourselves to three minutes.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Ira Baylon, Sixth Nelson Road. If I could ask you to ask the Board of Selectmen their rationale for not approving the motion?
So you'd like an explanation as to the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Board of Selectmen, would you please offer some information relative to your recommendation?
I won't speak for the entire board. They're all independent minds, and they can speak for themselves. I will tell you that what actually happened at that meeting was FinCom did not ask us to vote. The board never actually took a vote, because they didn't need our vote. FinCom asked the Board of Selectmen present if we would support them, and frankly said, clearly, we don't need your vote, but would you support us? And two of us said yes, and one of us said no. As far as the vote taken at the polls, the people of Charleston voted to approve a public safety complex. They also voted to approve the price for the complex. When they shot it down, or what they shot down at the polls, and to Mr. Lemansky's point, in a landslide fashion, wasn't the building or the price, but the funding mechanism. So I hope, if anything, that clarifies some of the points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter?
Don Allery, thirteen Hannah's Way. I'd just like an explanation, as a clear explanation, because of all the wording, precisely what a yes vote means versus what a no vote means.
Thank you. A yes vote means that the town would vote to eliminate or discontinue any town project previously approved by the vote of town meeting. If I may borrow that back, please, thank you. That was later, with the exception of any contracts committed to prior to this vote, previously approved by a vote of town meeting that was later considered by a two-and-a-half override and failed. So a yes vote means that the town would vote to eliminate or discontinue any town project that had been approved and later failed through a two-and-a-half override.
Roger Cludia, seventeen Coben Road. I guess I'm trying to figure out what exactly would happen if they go ahead with this project, and yet the voters refuse to raise the taxes, because that's really what the vote was. I guess if the Board of Selectmen maybe, or the Finance Committee maybe, could explain that, what happens then? Do we start laying people off? Could somebody just comment on that?
So, thank you. I'll turn first to Town Administrator Golis.
Essentially, it would mean, essentially, it would mean that any work that's done would have to be completely under the two-and-a-half, would have to be underneath a two-and-a-half override. You couldn't raise taxes any more than two-and-a-half percent, plus new growth.
Attorney Cosgrove, would you care to provide an opinion?
It doesn't seem to me that this vote will bind any future town meeting. It's not a bylaw. So the project could go forward, and if they needed funding, they'd have to go for a debt exclusion, which is what was done, as I understand it, not an override. Overrides raise your taxes perpetually, or give the town the authority to do that. The debt exclusion simply allows you to pay the portion of the debt and the interest on it by the amount voted in a townwide ballot. So I don't, I think this is more an expression of the sentiment of this particular town meeting as it's composed, rather than having any binding effect on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Peter Cooper Jr., one ninety-four Berry Corner Road.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
And I think Attorney Cosgrove may have answered some of what I was asking, but I'm still a little confused if this is trying to address behavior going forward, or if this is going to discontinue some specific list of things that this has already happened to, which I don't know how many things are on that list, I can guess at one of them, but if somebody kind of clarifies, is this looking forward, or is this just canceling something that has already happened?
Through the moderator, you're asking a factual question, what the present elected officials here would intend to do.
I'm asking what this vote does. Are we making a recommendation, or a bylaw, or something, as you were saying, about future behavior, or if a yes vote would direct somebody to cancel any future work on existing projects?
Because the wording of the motion is that we would eliminate or discontinue any town project, with the exception of contracts, previously approved by a vote of town meeting. So it would be retroactive in its effect on other decisions that had previously been made.
Okay, then can we get a list of what these projects would be that would be discontinued by a yes vote?
So I believe Attorney Cosgrove responded that because the project was not actually considered as part of a two-and-a-half override that failed, it was offered as a debt exclusion vote, this would have no effect on that particular project that had been mentioned by Mr. Lemansky.
So a yes vote is expressing your will, but does absolutely nothing?
That's my understanding, yes.
And through the moderator, even if that, even if that word were changed, override the debt exclusion, this wouldn't bind any future town meeting, so far as I can see. It's an expression of sentiment. And by that, I'm not suggesting that that word could be changed, because there may be people who read this and know what their, you know, know what the law is, and they read override, they didn't read debt exclusion, so in my opinion, that'd be beyond the four corners of the article.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Borowski.
Sorry, Bill Borowski, sixty-nine Hagerty Road. To the gentleman, or forgive me, whoever asked regarding why the Board of Selectmen individually at the time opposed this, and just to echo Attorney Cosgrove a bit, I have concerns around the language and enforceability. First and foremost, as was mentioned, and let me also state that I was the individual who did not want to move forward with it.
That's not necessary to review the voting that took place at another meeting.
The reality is, at the end of the day, as Attorney Cosgrove mentioned, what was voted down was a debt exclusion. This, as motioned, is a symbolic vote. It's not going to carry any weight.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this motion that is new information to bring to the conversation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Robert Lemansky again.
Mr. Lemansky.
The intent of, my intent of writing this was directly focused at a item that was considered for a two-and-a-half, either debt exclusion or override, but I refer to it as an override, to mean that the town, meaning the Board of Selectmen, would eliminate the project from their, their things to do, thus meaning that it would be then put aside until it was completely brought up again, and a new town meeting to where it had a new vote. And that, yes, what we're saying is any contracts that were engaged in, they have to be honored. But there can be no more new contracts relative to this project. That was the intent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, so we're looking for yes votes to make this thing go away until it's represented in a form that is patternable for us voters.
Thank you. I understand that's your intention. I just do want to make it clear for the voters present that that would not necessarily be the effect of this based upon the language. Is there anything new to be added to this discussion?
Yes, ma'am, moderator. Francis Fenacy, fifty-one Main Street, Charleston.
Mr. Fenacy?
I would like to propose a further motion to the amended article, which would add the words, "This article is intended as a town bylaw."
This is a citizens petition.
There is, no.
So I believe that that motion to amend, to add the language bylaw, would not be allowed. Attorney Cosgrove, would you?
Well, through the moderator.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fenacy, an excellent lawyer, knows that the procedures in terms of amending bylaws, including putting it on the warrant, as such, that was not done. It could be done, it could be done at a future town meeting.
So adequate notice would not have been provided to all the voters of the town through the warrant to make it clear that in this case, it would be voted as an amendment to the bylaws.
Madam Moderator, may I?
Yes, sir.
I have to confess to you and everyone else here that when I read this motion for this article, my impression was this was a proposed bylaw. The, to treat it any other way would just create a nonsensical reason for even bringing it forward. I don't think the intention was to limit it as a expression, but as a binding bylaw. Obvious from the words of the article that that was the motive.
I understand what was clearly offered as the expressed interest, but the motion, the citizens petition that was presented, which required signatures in order to get on the warrant, did not state it as such. So I think we're with the language that we have through the citizens petition.
Through the moderator.
Yes, Attorney Cosgrove.
And again, Frank, you would know this, every motion... And again, Frank, you would know this, every motion in the last thirty-three years, when I've been town council, when you amend a bylaw, is to see if the town will vote to amend the Charlton general bylaws by such and such, and the town clerk place it in the bylaws in the appropriate location. So I don't, I would be, I don't agree. I don't think anyone who has been in Charlton for any period of time and attended town meetings would think this was going to be a bylaw. And if they did, they might have come to oppose it or support it. It could be done as such in a future town meeting.
Is there any additional new information to be provided, or another question, sir?
Not by me.
Thank you, Mr. Fenacy.
Good evening. Frank Lombardi, twenty Prindle Hill Road.
Good evening, Mr. Lombardi.
I guess when I read the motion on the warrant, I did not take that as an intention that if the motion passed, then any prior approved projects through the town meeting that failed in a town ballot would have to come back again to town meeting before approval. Instead of, so if a project was approved in a previous town meeting but failed on the ballot initiative, then instead of just bringing it back on the ballot as a ballot initiative again, they would have to go through both steps, both town meeting and the ballot. Am I reading that incorrectly?
That is not my understanding. I believe that this instead speaks to the financing of the project, not the project itself.
Well, it doesn't specify a particular project or any specific financing. It says the one that fails a two and a half override...
Correct.
That that project would be canceled. So there's, if the project is, if it was approved in a town, prior to a town meeting, but failed on a ballot, then it would need to come back to the town meeting again, instead of just going directly to the ballot.
But the project for twenty-eight point five million dollars did not fail on a two and a half override. It failed on a debt exclusion vote. So as a result, it renders this a moot point, essentially.
I thought the ballot vote was a two and a half override or a debt exclusion vote.
Ms. Spiewak, would you care to respond for the board? So the town meeting, Article sixteen. The ballot question, August thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Shall the town of Charlton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so exempt, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of constructing and equipping a new public safety building, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? That's how, that was the wording of the question on August thirteenth.
I don't read that as a debt exclusion question.
No, through the moderator, that would be, Von Council would have done that motion to exclude the debt.
To exclude the debt? That's the statutory language? Thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter?
Steve Coleman, Berry Corner Road. I also serve as the co-chair of the established Capitol Campaign Committee for this public safety project. I don't think anybody is disputing that the twenty-eight and a half million dollars for the debt exclusion that was asked at town meeting was overwhelmingly shot down. No one, including myself, disputes that. And no one disputes that that message was heard loud and clear. I would just encourage this town meeting to, instead of passing this tonight, which, to Mr. Lemansky's point, would then require to come back to another town meeting to start the process over again, if you think the twenty-eight and a half million dollars is a lot of money, if we want to just continue to kick the can down the road, and we visit this in another year or two, you know, tack another fifteen to twenty percent on top of the project. I think everybody sitting in front of me tonight on all these boards and committees heard the townspeople loud and clear. And they are working behind the scenes to get that number down, as is the committee. The Capitol Campaign Committee is working hard, reaching out to private donors to see certain parts of the project that could be funded. I would just suggest that we let the democratic process work, and we go back to the polls in November. And if the town meeting members, the town meeting, or, sorry, the voters of Charlton do not like the new number, and they do not like what has been put before them, they have an opportunity to vote now and shoot the project down again. But I would strongly urge this town meeting to not pass this, because, again, we're just kicking the can down the road, we're delaying it. And everyone sitting at this town meeting today, including the rest of the residents, have an opportunity to go back to the polls and cast a yes or a no vote as to whether or not they want to support this project, once the new number is known, and maybe that number is more palatable. But in my opinion, this is not the answer to try to block this project.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said that has not been said already?
Madam Moderator, if we can end this, is, I'd like to make a amendment to my motion to where it says was later considered by a two and a half override or debt exclusion and failed. So I want to add the words, "a debt exclusion." I have it here in writing.
I understand. Thank you. I believe you proposed that amendment earlier, and our attorney advised us that because this is a citizen's petition, and there were other signatories to it, and it was not posted in the warrant, that this would not have signaled to individuals who might take an interest in that vote to come attend the meeting.
All right. I, thank you. And I respect that. But I definitely say to the voters here is, we need to resend the message that eight hundred and sixty people tried to send, but they didn't get it. We need to resend it, that this project needs to get put aside, re-presented, and reconsidered. And again, I'm for a new fire station. It's not that I'm against it, but I'm not for one for twenty-eight point five million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Spiewak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, I'm speaking as a citizen's, that's why...
Can you please state your address, then?
Ninety Oz Good Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo what Steve Coleman mentioned earlier, that we should be waiting, and, you know, there were a lot of people behind the scenes working to make this come to fruition. And look at how many people are here tonight. We have over nine thousand voters in this community. Let's give them a chance to weigh in on this as well. And I want you to, so I'm asking you to not support this as presented, and I'm asking you to please consider that for our police and firemen, all our first responders. We need to give them what they need to help us. And let's send a message, even though it may not hold any water. So please, consider voting this down, and in the meantime, maybe come on board and help the Capitol Campaign, find other ways to help. Let's all roll the boat in the same direction.
Okay, let's, we're going to keep our comments to the article at hand. Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing further to be said in this matter, all those voting in favor of this Article thirteen citizen's petition, please signify by voting yes. All those opposed, please signify by voting no.
Hello, point of order?
Point of order. Would you please come forward and state your point of order?
As, is it as modified during the discussions?
There was no modification of the article presented.
Mr. Lemansky offered some modifications to the wording.
Mr. Lemansky.
So are we voting on first his proposed modifications, or are we voting on as it was originally written?
Well, there was, there was no second, but I didn't allow it. I didn't allow it. I... Because of the citizen's petition motion, right. The, to be clear, for the point of order question, was there an amendment offered? Yes. The moderator did not allow it, because this was a citizen's petition signed by other citizens who also presented this motion as stated, and it was not included with the language in the town warrant. So those who are not in attendance would not necessarily have known what this was voting to. Yep. Hold on, we stopped the vote for a point of order. Okay, we're gonna, now we will bring this motion to a vote. All those in favor... Okay, hold on, we have an electronic pause. Mr. Borowski. No, we are not voting on what was written in the warrant. We're voting on the motion that was presented by Mr. Lemansky. Correct. I will read the motion again before we vote. So Article thirteen reads, as presented, "To see if the town will vote to eliminate or discontinue any town project, with the exception of any contracts committed to prior of this vote, previously approved by vote of town meeting, that was later considered by a two and a half override and failed." That's the motion. All those in favor, please signify. All those in favor, please signify by voting yes. All those opposed, please signify by voting no. Thirty-four votes in the affirmative, seventy-one in the negative. The motion is not approved. Article fourteen. Get back to my... To see, Article fourteen, citizen's petition, "To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer from available funds, including free cash, the sum of twenty thousand dollars, to have a financial analysis of the fire/ambulance department to determine total department income, short-term and long-term costs, efficiency, and need." Mr. Lemansky.
Yes, Madam Moderator. Do I need to reread this?
You do not. If you'd like to make...
Second.
Would you like to make a motion to support that article as read?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lemansky. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. So the motion is to see if the town will vote, and it reads exactly as that, as the article. It does not. Well, it states by taxation, borrow, or transfer from available funds, including free cash.
Through the moderator...
Yes.
That doesn't specify where the money is going to come from, taxation, borrowing, or...
The town. See if the town will vote, and again, it's coming from the town.
Yeah, through the moderator, the...
Yes, sir.
Probably could come from my taxes.
Hold on, Attorney Cosgrove, could you clarify your point?
Through the moderator.
Yes, sir.
A motion to expend, which is to appropriate funds, needs to specify the source. The motion as written specifies all the sources. It needs to specify the source, so they know the effect upon the budget. Is it from taxation?
I believe it says by taxation.
No, taxation, borrow, or transfer is what the article...
So it's all of the above. Whichever one works, whichever one fits, wherever the money is.
Through the moderator, that's insufficient, Rob, because then, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Finance Director can tell you, she needs to know what effect it's going to have on the budget. If it's borrowing, that's one effect. If it's taxation, that's another effect.
This language has been taken from numerous articles that have been presented in front of this town.
I am.
So I don't know, I don't know why you're picking on this one.
I, through the moderator, I absolutely agree. We, the way that the articles are drafted is to spell out all the possibilities that the voters might get to choose from at town meeting. When you come to town meeting, you need to say, all right, this is from taxation, or from borrowing, or is there another, or from available funds, which would be free cash.
So the clarification...
It does say free cash, including free cash.
Clarification is that this allows for all of the above, and then doesn't specify where the actual transfer or funding would come from.
So through the moderator, he can now, you can now change that, if you wish, to specify the source.
Okay, we'll take it from Jim Cosgrove's salary line. Just kidding, Jim.
Glad to do it.
Yeah, okay, okay. Again, let's call it from free cash.
Okay, so because free cash is cited in the question, that is not outside the four corners of the article, and therefore, people who petitioned agreed to that as a potential source, and others who are not present at this meeting also saw that that was a potential source. So I will allow you to make the motion to amend the original motion. Would you care to re-present the motion, since we have not, well, we do have a motion and a second? So your motion to amend, we should address that first.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer from available funds from free cash.
So to see if the town will vote to raise...
Just to appropriate from free cash.
To appropriate from free cash, Mr. Lemansky. Is that acceptable language?
That's acceptable, thank you.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate from free cash.
The sum of twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And through the moderator, now the Finance Director will correct us all.
Okay, might I ask for the opinion of the Finance Director on the amendment motion, which does not yet have a second? So do I have a second on the amendment? Second is received. And may I ask the opinion of the Finance Director, please?
The balance in free cash is zero.
The current balance in free cash is zero.
Then we'll have to modify it, too. Just borrow. We're going to borrow it. Okay, no.
All right, so we're going to take one final chance at this, and I do encourage all citizens to please prepare your motions before coming to town meeting, so we're not writing motions with you here. But I will accommodate one point of clarification. So are you withdrawing the previous motion?
From fresh, right.
Thank you.
Right. As advised by the Financial Director, it will be a transfer from ambulance receipts.
Okay.
Which, I believe, was over a million dollars this year.
All right, this is the last amendment to this citizen's petition motion. Do, and I need to clarify whether that's acceptable or not, is a transfer from ambulance receipts considered a transfer from available funds? Yes. Okay, so therefore, it falls within the four corners of the article. And the motion that is being made to amend citizen's petition, Article fourteen, it's a motion to amend, not a motion to adopt. The motion to amend, Mr. Lemansky, is to see if the town will vote to transfer from ambulance receipts the sum of twenty thousand dollars to have a financial analysis of the fire ambulance department to determine total department income, short-term and long-term costs, efficiency and need. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second to amend the motion? Mr. Borowski? Okay, thank you. And you're not seating in the visitor's section, please. The, all voters must be on the floor. Thank you. Thank you, Roger. That's okay. We have a motion and a second to amend Article fourteen. All in favor of amending Article fourteen to indicate a transfer from ambulance receipts. This is not an adoption of Article fourteen, but an amendment to the language. This is not an adoption of Article 14, but an amendment to the language.
You can't amend an article, this is simply a motion.
He's amending the motion, excuse me. Yeah, so amending the motion. Yep. That's okay. No, no, I've got it written. It's an amended motion. Tell me when you're ready. So this is a motion to amend the motion for Article 14, all those in favor of amending the motion, signify by voting yes. All those against amending the motion, please signify by voting no. There were fifty-five votes in the affirmative, forty-seven in the negative. The motion carries to amend the language of the motion for Article 14, which will now be restated. Is there anything further to say on this article as amended?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Anything new to be stated, please?
Yes, yes, again, the purpose of this is, and this is just my business sense that comes out, and it, it's incredible how the ambulance fund is turning over a million dollars to the town. My only question is, is what did it cost us, the taxpayers, in order for the ambulance department, which is really being run like a business? Is, I'm just saying, it, it should be looked at, just for the fact of, of best practices, efficiency, and also to be looked at, not from a point of view of just today, but what is gonna be the long range, long-term effect on the, the, the cost of, of retirements, the cost of injured on duty, and all of those things, so that the taxpayers will have a full picture of it. And I did talk to a firm that, that does these type of surveys, and it's right in their wheelhouse, 'cause I wanted to find out if, in fact, this dollar amount was sufficient, and they had told me yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lamansky, so you're.
That's where that is.
Thank you, so you've stated your justification, that's not a question you're seeking an answer for tonight, that's the justification for the motion.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Hello. Iowa Bayland, Six Nelson Road, two questions, one is who would be doing the analysis? And two, not really a question, but a statement, this reads to me like the job description of the fire chief. Does he not do this already? I, I, I don't understand why we would need this, if we have a fire chief.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. The article itself does not state who would perform the financial analysis, so I, we cannot answer that question this evening. And your other question is, why do we have a fire chief if not to determine the department income and, and oversee it, yes. Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Ms. Moderator.
Good evening.
Fire Chief Ed Knopf, Forty-Six Oxford Road. Yes, we do get audited every year, through finance, we have some, an independent auditor who comes and looks at every account that we have. Thankfully, I'm able to say that we've passed every audit that we've ever been through. Second, I have no objection to being audited, and having an operational analysis done of the fire department provided, it's done by an organization that is well-versed in national standards, such as NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, OSHA, and the National Institute of Standards and Technology. And that, once that analysis is done, the town is gonna take those recommendations and see them through, because what I'm sure you will find is that the staffing levels are under level. The coverage zones that we have with one fire station is inadequate.
Thank you, Chief Knopf, I'm sure there's a long list you'd like to provide, but we're speaking to the article presented this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Sage, Lincoln Point Road.
Yes, Mr. Sage.
Now that the article has changed in language, before you get a recommendation from the finance committee or in the board of selectmen, do they need to reconsider their support or non-support?
I will find out for you if they have changed their opinion on the petition as a result of that. So the citizens petition now reads, the motion on Article 14 is to move that the town will vote to transfer from ambulance receipts, the sum of $20,000, to have a financial analysis of the fire/ambulance department to determine the total department income, short-term and long-term costs, efficiency and need. So I will ask the finance committee first, if your recommendation on this motion has changed. The finance committee does not support the motion as changed. And the board of selectmen, is there any change in your disposition based upon the new wording of the motion?
So the question is, Madam Moderator, since we have two members who didn't vote on the original
Original.
motion, can we legitimately take a new vote here?
To provide a recommendation on the, the motion.
And to include the new board members.
There has been a precedent at prior town meetings of both the finance committee and the board of selectmen being asked for their opinions, and conferring quickly, and providing an opinion to the town. So in, unless Attorney Cosgrove kicks me under the table, in my opinion, the board of selectmen, it's perfectly appropriate to ask for your recommendation on an article or motion before the town meeting. If you'd like to take a moment to confer, or if you.
So, Madam Moderator, did FinCom just answer?
FinCom does not support the motion.
Okay, so then, we'll do this with the new members, so. We have a second. So we have a motion and a second to support the amendment, any discussion? Mr. Borowski?
No, it really, it doesn't matter, it's not, the discussion doesn't belong to everyone, we need one recommendation. It can't, you can hear it, yeah.
Fifty-nine thousand dollars, and not twenty thousand dollars, and the whole thing is dead in the water, anyway. We, we don't, we don't know the company that you're, that you're looking to pick, and he, that sounds, to me, it looks like a, a pretty expensive. I don't think, I don't think you can get someone to drive up from Boston for twenty thousand dollars.
The motion is to transfer twenty thousand dollars, yes, Mr. Lamansky?
If I may, the, the owner of the company that I talked to already does work for the town of Charlton, and he has expressed to me, it was in their wheelhouse, and the twenty thousand dollars was enough for them to do what, what, what needed to be done. Obviously, it would have to be to- totally laid out exactly what services, but he gave me no indication that would, would, would go above that.
So Mr.
Also, the fact that it's over ten thousand dollars, it has to go up to bid. So I can't, can't go and say, yeah, XYZ company will do it, it doesn't do any good, because it's gotta go up to bid.
The indication of who would perform this analysis is not part of the question. Yes. We, we need you to complete your recommendation to the meeting. Yes, Mr. Singer.
So we'll do this, the five. Further discussion?
I, I just wanna mention, I do not support this motion, I think there's a process in place, and I, I would welcome at, like, the appropriate meetings, FinCom meeting, with our finance director, board of selectmen, but to do this now, you really don't have all the facts, so that's one of the reasons why, I would, one of the reasons why I will not be supporting this, but.
Is there any further discussion from the board of selectmen?
Not that everybody needs my personal thoughts, but a financial analysis never hurts to know how much we spend to get a certain amount of revenues, that's what, that's what, Mr. Lamansky sounded like he was more interested in the, the finance piece, we have this much money coming in, we have this much money going out, and looking at that finance piece in more detail. It can never hurt us to look at the, the details, and it usually, looking at those kind of details enlightens us to understand business, it may even help the fire department with their budget also.
And therefore, what is the recommendation from the board of selectmen, please?
Is there any further discussion from the board of selectmen? The only comment that I will make is simply that the chief can already provide a lot of the information requested, he is audited. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea, however, before I would vote to approve them like this, I would like to have an opportunity to actually discuss this with the chief, and do my homework, so I will still be voting no. So is there any further discussion from the board of selectmen? Hearing none, loudly, please, so they can hear you, this is in favor of the amendment, correct?
No, this is a recommendation of the board of selectmen to the voters.
To support the amendment.
To support the motion as amended, correct.
So, in favor, I don't give a roll call, public meeting. So all those in favor of supporting the motion as amended, please say aye loudly. Opposed? Chair votes no, the motion fails three to two.
Okay, so the recommendation of the board of selectmen is that they do not support this motion as amended, which is the question before us. Is there anything further and new to be stated on this question? Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Steve Coleman, Berry Corner Road. I will just say that this is a very specialized study, I can assure you that there is no one that is contracted with the town of Charlton that is qualified to do this study, as Mr. Lamansky has stated. The way that the article is written is it talks about operations, it talks about future need, it talks about many operational issues outside of finance. So this is a specialized company that you would have to do in order to look at the full operation. I don't think Chief Knopf is, he just said, I don't think he opposes it, there's no secrets, it's an open book. Again, I would just reiterate what the chief said. If this was to be voted, and a report was to be completed, I hope that the town, including town meeting, would be anxious to support the recommendations that are in it for improvement as well.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Coleman. Yes, Mr. Singer.
Feel free to just tell me to shut up, but, you know, the, the board here simply took a vote whether to support, and that's the individuals, and I'm, I'm sure and I know everyone here understands that that's just our opinion, and you're all entitled to your own opinion, and you'll vote what you want, and what you believe.
Thank you, we fully understand that, on each article where we have asked for a recommendation of the board of selectmen and from the finance committee, thank you for restating that. Yes, Chief Knopf, do you have something new to add to the discussion?
Yes, I do. My, my first question would be, why is this the forum that this is brought up? I've never once had a visitor to the fire station to ask me about the operation of the building, and how we operate.
Could you speak to the citizens petition, the content of the motion?
What I would say is I have more than enough, in 2015, we received a 1.7235 million dollar grant to fund nine new positions, in order to meet the need of this town, and servicing it with the fire and ambulance department. In that grant, it was identified we had severe budget shortfalls, we had severe overtime in excess of $250,000 a year, we have since reduced that. I am now budgeted for $137,500 for overtime, that's more than $100,000 less. So if anybody would like to see these figures, and the reasoning and rationale that was behind this, my door is always open at the fire station.
Thank you for offering that, alright, hearing no further discussion on this matter, I will repeat the motion, because we've had a bit of discussion. The motion is to move that the town will vote to transfer from ambulance receipts, the sum of $20,000, to have a financial analysis of the fire and ambulance department to determine total department income, short-term and long-term costs, efficiency and need. All those in favor of this motion, which was seconded, please vote in the affirmative. All those opposed to this motion, please vote no. A majority vote was needed, thirty-three voted in favor, seventy-three voted no, the motion does not carry. Article 15, citizens petition, yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I'm Kathleen Walker, from Ninety-Six D Baker Pond Road.
Ms. Walker, is this a point of order?
Yes. I was under the mistaken impression that this whole warrant had been voted on by the current foreboard of selectmen, and I just realized that it wasn't. And I'm concerned with, I know that there's a meeting prior to this meeting, and I assumed that they all had voted on each one of these articles, but now I'm finding out that they had not, could I be, get some clarification on that?
So I will actually pose a question to our attorney first, and I will get you an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the moderator.
Yes, please.
Always a pleasure to see you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
This, I think this is the case of just about every year, I'm not sure of that, because there's usually a bigger span of time between the election and the. of that because there's usually a bigger span of time between the election and the, and the annual town meeting. But the, the board that, there had to be a vote on a warrant. It had to be taken by the board as constituted at that time. That doesn't necessarily mean that all the members of the present board would support it, but it doesn't invalidate or cause any problem with respect to the warrant. And then the present board would make its own judgment as to what action they would support or oppose under each article, which I imagine they have done. Uh, and that's, there's no legal issue there.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Cosgrove. I'm just concerned because we are not allowed to know how the current board votes because this warrant was voted on by a previous board. And, um, so that's concerning to me. Usually, there's two to three weeks between the election and the town meeting. And, um, in that time, the new board gets to vote. And because they had a meeting prior to this meeting, I assume they would all have gone over all these articles and voted on them. So, it, because that's not the case, um, I think we should all become aware that any article here has not been voted on by this current board, but by the previous board. And it makes a difference to me personally. Thank you.
Well, through the moderator, a clarification that, that, that the, the board is presently constituted, had the opportunity at this meeting to support or not support each article. And nothing would prevent individual members or the board as a whole as changing what the recommendation may have been as it was stated in the, in the warrant.
The only reason, and just to remind folks, the only reason we did ask for a poll of the vote of the board was because the motion had changed. So, the language of the motion had changed.
Right.
Thank you.
I just, it just, I just wanted clear to everybody that it's a previous board that voted for, for this warrant.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and a previous town moderator who had more than 48 hours to...
[laughing]
Thank you. Okay, so Article 15, the citizen's petition. To see if the town will vote to allow selectmen to only spend, commit, and authorize funds that have been specifically approved at town meeting. And do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Lemansky.
I have a motion to see if the town will vote to allow selectmen to only spend, commit, and authorize funds that have been specifically approved at town meeting with the exception of grants, gifts, and other as expressed in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any, uh, we're on Article 15. Do we have a recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not support this motion.
And is there a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen does not support this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter?
Uh, yes, Madam Moderator. And again, I apologize for keeping everybody here a little bit late later than may be necessary. But, uh, this, this whole theme here with the selectmen spending is, uh, as some of us can recall what happened in the last 12 to eight, eighteen months. But I know of one specific occasion, uh, which was, it was certainly was authorized, not authorized, it was certainly reasonable to do it, but both the selectmen and the Finance Committee committed into spending $350,000 or approximately that without any, uh, discussion with the, the voters about that, even after the fact, to where it could have said, "Look, it was an emergency, this is what we did." And my point is, nothing was said about it. And it, it certainly flies in the face of, of, of being, being open with transparency. And again, it was 20,000, 30,000, fine, but 350 grand, that's quite a bit of dough. So, it was for two, two, uh, two trucks. Uh, and certainly, the highway needed them, they had problems. The circumstances were that the, um, that in order, in order to get the trucks for the winter season, they had to be ordered at a specific time.
So, if we could keep your comments to the...
Yes, yes, but just to explain.
The background, yes.
Of why, why rightfully so. Uh, you know, the selectmen and the Finance Committee did what they needed to do because the warrant was closed, the demand, the need came in to where they had problems. And the only way they could get the trucks at this time, they had to order them then, in which, in which they did. But my point is, again, getting back to openness and transparency, we as voters never heard about it.
Thank you.
And I don't know about anyone else, but I think $350,000 is, is quite a bit of money.
So, that's your inspiration for the article?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
May I ask a question?
Yes, Attorney Cosgrove has a question.
Are you ready?
For Mr. Lemansky?
I don't know if I have an answer, but, yes. Through the, um...
Moderator?
Through the, through the moderator, um, what do you mean, what does the motion mean by the word specifically?
Meaning, if they're going to spend my money, they would have had to have a statement of exactly what the money was for and who it was going to. That would be a specific expenditure.
Well, and, and through the moderator, the reason I ask is that, is that under Massachusetts law, no public official, selectman, or anyone else is allowed to expend any funds which have not been appropriated. And when the appropriation is, and, so the, the funds that were spent in the example you gave had been appropriated. You, it may be that, I'm trying to understand your, your intent. It may be that you're saying that appro- votes to appropriate funds should be more specific in what they can be used for rather than broad, but I'm not...
Uh, I, I, again, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm perfect or, or my hearing is perfect. I go to most of the me- meetings is this money was, was, it was an emergency act or appeared to be an emergency act. And there was no mention at any town me- meeting.
Thank you.
Before or after about the expenditure.
So, specifically approved at town meeting is the wording of the motion.
Right. And Mr. Cosgrove, to your point, that they're not, they're not supposed to be able to do it, but again, not that I wasn't in favor of, of doing it, but it had to be done, but it was done. It was done without, you know, during, I call it the cover of night, but, uh, it wasn't done maliciously, but it was done. And the thing is, these things shouldn't go on, and if they need to go on, the taxpayers should, should be told about it. That's all.
We've heard your point. Thank you, Mr. Lemansky.
And through the moderator, if I may...
Yes, Mr. Cosgrove.
I just, I was just making the point that if, if the motion passes, the term specifically could create problems in the future as to what, what that means.
Thank you for your legal advice. Yes, is there anything further to be said?
Thank you. Peter Cooper, Berry Corner Road. Um, and this may be roughly what Mr. Cosgrove had just said, Madam Moderator, but I'd like a really clear explanation on if this in fact does anything because if, I mean, we just voted a budget earlier this evening of, you know, this board can spend so much and that board can spend so much. And, and my understanding was with a couple exceptions for like snow and ice, I don't know if there's any others, they can't spend more than what's in there. So, does this in fact do anything or is this just our meeting having a chance to gripe?
So, I can share the way I read this and the way I understand the allocation at town meeting that selectmen are, the town already votes on the budget as you've stated and already allocates funds and appropriates funds for particular purposes. This does provide for, the motion provides for the exception of grants, gifts, and others, um, other funds. So, it restates what is already...
And so, is this, um, specific to like this fiscal year regarding the budget we just passed? Or is this some kind of bylaw type thing that's trying to constrain future boards of selectmen for years to come?
This is, and the way I read the motion, it is not, uh, retroactive to change something. It's more to express that, uh, selectmen spend, commit, and authorize funds that have been specifically approved at town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the, through the moderator, if I...
Yes, Attorney Cosgrove.
Perhaps I can, I can restate my concern. I'm concerned that this could open the door unintentionally, I'm sure, to litigation. A particular board, be it the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, or an official spends money and someone says, "There was no specific vote on that," and they take it to court. So, I'm, I'm concerned about potential liability.
Thank you.
Just because of the word specifically.
Thank you for your legal opinion. Yes, is there anything new to be said on this matter?
Suzanne Hall, 52 E Bailey's Road. Uh, through the moderator, I'd like to ask the select board if they are able to spend money outside of a select board meeting. If something comes up throughout the year, are we going to need another town meeting to approve that expenditure? Or are you allowed to do that at a select board meeting where it's open to the public and on the agenda?
So, you're seeking clarification as to the parameters of the selectmen in, um, spending money essentially?
I under- I'm understanding, Mr. Lemansky, is concerned that the select board is spending money that the town doesn't approve.
That the town...
I'm asking if those approvals come at a select board meeting for things that come up during the year.
So, I'm going to defer the question first to, uh, Mr. Golis, our town administrator.
The Board of Selectmen is allowed to expend anything within the budget that's appropriated. At the end of the fiscal year, any of those appropriations can be, um, transferred in from other sources of funding in order to cover any, uh, projected deficits within the last two months of the year. Uh, the two, uh, the expenditures that I believe Mr. Lemansky was referring to were actually expenditures from a gift account, according to the Finance Director.
But did that approval happen at an open select board meeting?
I believe so.
And those items were on the agenda?
That is correct.
So, townspeople had the option to support them or refute them at an open meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no further discussion on this matter.
Excuse me, uh, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator.
One last comment, Mr. Lemansky?
Yes, yes. The thing is, is, um, those, I'm going to be specific, those trucks were needed and, and may have well fall on the, the, the emergency act. Um, I don't recall, and maybe someone can show me the selectmen's minutes of the meetings to where that was discussed. I don't think it was ever discussed. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of interested in the gift account. Is, is, we actually have an account of, of funds of $350,000 in it that, that, that have been gifted to the town? Is, is that true?
So, I will, uh, take your question relative to a gift account since your motion includes reference to gifts and ask our Finance Director to please clarify.
Yes, at the time, they did have enough to cover it from a gift account. And I believe that the, at least on the Finance Committee side, it was at a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and, uh, um, it happened at the joint meeting that we have with the town of Dudley and the school department. That's when the vote was taken.
And, and thank you, Donnie, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Fobio.
Madam Moderator, through, through you, could, could you give me an example of, of, how the funds, or where the gift came from? Or are they all anonymous?
So, we have a question as to the gift account, where those funds, um, derived originally. Do we know the source offhand, Ms. Fobio?
Sometimes, sometimes we know the source, sometimes they're anonymous.
Okay.
And sometimes it's multiple sources that make a donation to a department.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
To your left.
Thank you, Mr. Lemansky. Yes, excuse me. Mr. Speewack.
Just for the townsfolk here, those accounts no longer exist. They've all been cleaned up.
Okay, thank you. So, we no longer have gift accounts. Is that what you're stating? That particular gift account no longer exists. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Is there anything new to be said relative to this motion?
John Smith, 136 Dresser Hill Road. And, and the printing in our, uh, pamphlet, there's no, there's, it's not, does not have the literature that Mr. Lemansky is adding at the end of that.
That's correct. The motion is that the petitioner supplies the motion. And so, Mr. Lemansky stated the motion. I can repeat the motion before we vote.
Please.
Yep. Okay, hearing, hearing no further discussion, I will, uh, repeat the motion that you were voting on. This comes under Article 15 and the motion states to move that the town will vote to allow selectmen to only spend, commit, and authorize funds that have been specifically approved at town meeting with the exception of grants, gifts, and other as expressed in Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. All those in favor of this motion...
Point of order.
Excuse me, point of order, please, uh, come to the microphone and state your point.
Yeah. Phil Donahue, 126 Osgood Road, use the word "more" instead of "see."
Mr. Donahue?
You used the word "more" instead of "see" when you read that. It makes a major difference in the language. The way I'm reading is "to see" and you said "to..."
I'm, I'm not seeing...
I believe you used a different word, language, when you read it.
So, I'm reading the motion that Mr. Lemansky stated, to move that the town will vote to allow selectmen to only spend, commit, and authorize funds that have been specifically approved at town meeting with the exception of grants, gifts, and other as expressed in Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Okay. It was my understanding that, uh, you were saying "to move," okay? And it's, I was taking it as "to move" versus "to see," okay? And I, I was taking that language as different.
Ah.
It's an article versus a motion.
The article is "to see," the motion is "to move," that the town will vote. So, all in favor of the motion, as read twice, please vote in the affirmative by pressing yes. All those against the motion, please vote no. There are 25 votes in the affirmative, 76 votes in the negative. The motion does not carry. Article 16, citizen's petition. To see if the town will vote to require the financial portion of any labor contract with the town of Charlton must also be approved by the majority of the Finance Committee. Mr. Lemansky?
I'll second that, as, as read.
So, that's the article and you wish to, um...
Second as read, and then I will, I will make a, a move to, uh, to pass over this article.
Okay, so as the, uh, one of the sponsors of the article, you want to lay it on the table or to postpone indefinitely?
Um, why don't we lay it on the table and vote?
You want us to lay it on the table and pick it up later in the meeting?
No.
No. You'd like to postpone indefinitely or withdraw your motion?
Uh, postpone indefinitely.
Okay, there is a motion to postpone indefinitely, Article 16. Is there a second? Is there any discussion to be had?
No one wants to go home. Good thing the mosquitoes aren't out yet.
Any discussion to be had on this point? Hearing none. All those in favor of postponing Article 16 indefinitely? Our electronics are catching up. Our electronics are catching up. Thank you for your patience. All those in favor of postponing Article 16 indefinitely, signify by voting "yes." All those opposed, signify by voting "no." There are 88 votes in the affirmative, 13 in the negative. The motion carries to postpone indefinitely. Article 17, citizen's petition. "To see if the town will vote that any article for the purchase or lease of multiple items cannot total more than $100,000. The purpose of this is to prevent bundling of items from fire, highway, cemetery, police, recreation, and et cetera as one. This has totaled over $600,000." Is there a motion?
I'll second that as read.
Okay, so that you're making the motion as presented?
Correct.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Borowski seconds the motion. Is there a recommendation from the finance committee on Article, the motion for Article 17?
Finance committee does not support this motion.
Thank you. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on Article 17's motion?
The Board of Selectmen does not support this motion.
Is there any discussion to be had relative to this motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator, as explained, I've seen in the past to where, especially during the October town meeting, to where this practice had been practiced or was practiced. And it just makes it extremely difficult for voters to be able to come up, express their viewpoint when you've got so many departments that are being represented within the article. And I just think it's unfair, dirty pool, whatever you wanna call it. But I'm just trying to, through my observations, is trying to make sure that it just doesn't happen again. And that's the purpose of this. Thank you.
Thank you. For any voter who's leaving the meeting, I just remind you to please go to the front of the meeting to turn in your voting device. Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Stephen Sage, Lincoln Point Road.
Yes.
This was kind of answered at the last meeting when it was brought up about bundling. And it was received well that they would consider not bundling as much so that we didn't spend lots and lots of time taking something out, making new motions. But it would be a good suggestion to consider putting things in smaller amounts so that people could just vote once on an item that they approve, no on an item they don't approve, or whatever the way they're feeling. It might shorten the length of town meeting to do that as opposed to spending hours and hours with multiple amendments to it. I don't approve of this as a mandate, though. I think it should be a recommendation that you consider and maybe present in the fall to us your articles in that fashion.
Thank you. So, you're speaking in favor of the idea but not the motion?
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Walker.
Madam Moderator, Kathleen Walker. I'm supporting this motion. I've been against bundling for a long time, primarily because there may be one piece of that bundle that I just don't agree with. And unless I make a big kerfuffle like Stephen has suggested, then, then the whole thing goes through. And I think it negates the concept of town meeting to bundle things together, in that manner. So, I'm in support of this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter that has not been said already? Mr. Cooper.
Peter Cooper, Berry Corner Road. Well, again, I kind of appreciate, like previous speakers have said, the idea here. I'm trying to understand how enforceable this is, particularly with articles generally, if you look at the example that was for capital items that didn't, that we passed over. It usually doesn't have dollar amounts at all. So, suppose we pass this and some future town meeting selectmen put something on that's a bundle of stuff for $200,000 in violation of this. What happens? Can we not vote on it? Do we vote on it anyway? Does it doesn't do anything? Just, I'm trying to understand what practical impact this has and how it gets enforced, if at all.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to refer the question to Town Council.
I think Mr. Sage, living up to his name, had it right. This is really an expression of sentiment. The, what goes in a warrant, with the exception of petition for articles, is vested in the Board of Selectmen, not in the town meeting. Historically, as many here would know, but not all, long ago, articles, these articles were taken individually, different items. But in the last administration, in an attempt to make the meeting shorter, things were combined. It can, it can be done either way. And if they're combined, you can ask to hold certain items, and it may be more procedurally complex, as a couple of speakers have indicated. But ultimately, it's up to the selectmen. So, I'd say when they're working on the warrant, anyone who has input, you know, make it known to them. Make it known to them individually or as a board. I would be concerned about this again, and I'm sure it was not intended. But when I read Article 17 and the motion, I say, "What about the budget you passed tonight?" There's a lot of money there. I'm pretty sure there are gonna be contracts expended by people that are gonna total more than $100,000 in order to get the job done. So, I hear what you're saying, and I, it's a perfectly legitimate position. I'd say take it to the Board of Selectmen. But I'd recommend against passing this article. It wouldn't bind them anyway, and it would just cast into doubt the vote you've already taken on your budget.
Madam Moderator.
So, just to clarify, what was just stated was in response to the question around enforcement, and you stated it would not be binding.
Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Singer.
Again, just, there may be people here who don't know, and stop me if I'm wrong, but I certainly agree that clarity is important, and if you wanna take things separately, that's always good as well. When you take, if you have a very large budget, your meeting can go into multiple nights. So, the onus to bundle, as they say, I think, was to make town meeting a little easier on those who participate. However, that does not prevent any town meeting participant, and this has happened at town meeting, from making a motion on the floor if they wanted to have a particular item taken separately, to have that item removed and voted on separately. And if that person gets a second, then we vote, and that item in question can be removed and then acted on separately. Just for clarification.
That's correct. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said?
Ken, I would like to propose an amendment that we add to the end of the motion. This is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen from this town meeting only.
So, would you instead add that to the beginning of the motion to recommend?
I'm happy to word it however you'd like, Madam Moderator.
Well, so, we require that you place your amendment in writing, and it has to be submitted to the front, to the clerk. It has to be entered into our system. If you'd like to propose amendment wording, I am happy to read the amendment as presented. Point of order, Mr. Borowski. What is your, state your point, please. It depends on what the amendment includes. To non-binding. So, that is a valid question, thank you. And I think that speaks to the conversation we had earlier that a citizen's petition was signed on behalf of a group of citizens. Attorney Cosgrove, would you offer an opinion on that?
I think the motion lies, you can't change a petition, you have to put the petition on the warrant, just as worded by the petitioners. That's the article. But it tells the, the article is just warn the town over what might happen. And they should know that at a town meeting, people can make motions to amend. So, I don't think there's a problem procedurally.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll take it on this paper, thank you. No, that's fine, I've got it, yeah, thank you. So, because this adds that this is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen only and not binding, it does not change, it doesn't raise a flag for someone who's not present here at the meeting who would not otherwise have known that we were voting on this. It's simply modifying it to a recommendation. So, we have a motion to amend the original motion. Is there a second to the amendment? Without a second, there is no amendment. Did I, did someone offer a second? I can't tell. Second, thank you, it must be the masks. So, there is a second. So, we will first address the amendment. The amendment to this motion, to this article, is to see if the town will vote that any article for the purchase or lease of multiple items cannot total more than $100,000. The purpose of this is to prevent bundling of items from fire, highway, cemetery, police, recreation, and et cetera as one. In the past, this has totaled over $600,000. This is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen only and not binding. Is there any discussion to be had on the language of this amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please signify by voting "yes." All those against this amendment, please signify by voting "no." So, there were 46 in favor of the amended motion, amendment to the motion, 44 against. So, the motion carries. We will now consider the amended motion. Is there anything further to be said on the amended motion?
Jamie Terry, 1 Wakefield Drive.
Ms. Terry.
I just simply wanted to say, I think the Board of Selectmen, when they proposed the warrant and put it to a final vote to actually publish it, that's the time that somebody from the audience that had a concern about bundling could go to the selectmen's meeting and propose to the selectmen to unbundle the warrant as proposed, rather than here on the floor at town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Hearing no further discussion? Okay, as soon as our electronic voting system reboots? Absolutely. So, I will reread the motion as we prepare for the vote. The motion on the floor currently is to see if the town will vote that any article for the purchase or lease of multiple items cannot total more than $100,000. The purpose of this is to prevent bundling of items from fire, highway, cemetery, police, recreation, and et cetera as one. In the past, this has totaled over $600,000. This is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen only and not binding. That is the motion. Are we all set to vote? All those in favor of this motion, as just stated, please vote in the affirmative, "yes." All those against this motion, please vote "no." There were 40 votes in the affirmative, 49 in the negative. The motion does not pass. Mr. Sage.
Many hands make small work for the few. Would it be helpful to whoever has to clean up our town meeting to bundle our chairs four rows, four rows, four rows?
That's a very nice offer. Is that a motion to adjourn?
No, I leave that to horrible man.
So, before people leave, please, I wanna thank you all for your patience with our new electronic voting system and for your participation at town meeting. Mr. Singer.
And just, if Linda is here, a thank you to Linda Denault, if she is here, the outgoing moderator. Linda served, well, I think she's here. But, so, people should know also that Linda served more than once. She's a glutton for punishment. So, she served, and then she came back and did it again.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Denault. Yes, Mr. Lemansky.
Thank you very much.
Please, before you start collecting chairs, let's finish the speaking. Mr. Lemansky, final word.
I would like to thank the voters for their patience. I also wanna thank Karen, our town clerk, and Eric, her assistant, for the clickers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
My move, we adjourn.
Ms. Meskis, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Bring your voting devices forward, please. And thank you for bringing your chair as well.